Item one point two, we have our flag salute. And we have, do we have our students in the boardroom to lead us in our flag salute?
We do.
Yes. Good evening, please lead us.
Hi, my name is Diana and I'm a fifth grader at Valleydo Elementary School. Please join me in the flag salute, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ahora en español, yo prometo lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la república que representa una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
That was beautiful, young lady.
Dr. Bo, you might, you might be on mute.
Indeed, I am. I, thank you. I forgot how to do. Um, I congratulate and thank Diana for leading us in the flag salute. And now moving to item one point three, roll call, Board Member Benavides.
Present.
Board Member Greer.
Here.
Board Member Rodriguez Peña.
Here.
And Board Member Arianez, I believe is on her way.
Oh, that is correct.
Thank you. We will note her attendance when she arrives. And I, uh, Board Member Bo am present. Moving to item one point four, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
The move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, offer a vote. And I apologize, I am not yet logged in. Um, if you don't mind taking a roll call vote just for this item, I would greatly appreciate the consideration. Remember Benavides?
Yeah.
Board Member Rodriguez Peña?
Yes.
Board Member Greer?
Yes.
And Board Member Bo is yes, it's for the motion passes or yes to one absent. Now moving to item two point one, public comment on agenda or non-agenda items. Uh, do we have anyone in the boardroom, uh, in person to make public comment?
No one in person to make a comment.
And have anyone joining us online?
We have no hands raised on Jim.
Thank you. Moving to item three point one, presentation of the twenty-two, twenty-three LCAP. Ms. Ortega.
Thank you very much. Uh, tonight, uh, we have with us, um, Adriana Garcia Medina, uh, Director of Educational Services, uh, who's going to give us, um, a high level, uh, presentation on where we are, uh, mid-year in the LCAP. This is something that Azusa Unified School District, uh, does, uh, as a service, uh, to our community, uh, to our staff, uh, so that we can hold ourselves accountable about reporting out where we are kind of in the mid-year, uh, of our LCAP. Um, and so with that, I'd like to turn over to Ms. Garcia Medina.
All right. Uh, good evening, uh, Dr. Bo, Board of Education members, uh, cabinet, uh, and attendees. I am excited to be here, uh, this afternoon, late afternoon, to share with you our, uh, January update, our progress that, uh, we've made as a district, uh, towards our LCAP. Um, in order for us to spend our supplemental and concentration funds, uh, we need to provide a three-year LCAP plan. Um, and with that plan is included our district goals. What we use to measure our progress towards those goals, what funding we, uh, will be, what funding will be spent as we, uh, work to meet those goals. Uh, and additionally, the actions and services that are tied, uh, to each of those goals. Um, this is the second year of our LCAP. Um, next year will be our third year. And today we're going to be sharing with you an overview of each of the goals, actions and services and progress that we've made. Our first goal seeks to, uh, provide our students with outstanding learning environments. Uh, and this means that we have to look at how we provide instruction to our, uh, students and how we support our teachers and administrators, uh, to provide these outstanding, uh, learning environments. We want to make sure through this goal that we're providing safe and positive, uh, places for our students while at the same time growing academically and supporting their social emotional needs. Uh, for goal one, some of the metrics that we use to measure progress include, um, some basic services. Uh, here you see that we are measuring, uh, instructional, uh, instructional materials as well as facilities. Uh, we're working to meet, uh, standards in both of these areas. You'll see that four standards align instructional materials. We're at one hundred percent, um, and facility, or facilities inspection results were at seventy-nine percent. At the, at the end of three years, our goal is to be at ninety-six percent or higher for facilities ratings. Um, we do work with an outside agency to conduct facility inspections at each of our elementary and secondary's and middle school sites. Um, and again, we're partnering with our, uh, maintenance and operation team to ensure that we continuously improve our facilities, uh, so we can continue to see that number increase. Another metrics, uh, that we use is data from our annual youth youth survey. This slide shows you some examples of, uh, survey questions that we present to our students and our parents. Uh, the first is parents' sense of safety on campus as well as students' sense of safety on campus. Uh, we also ask if students are feeling challenged by the coursework that we are sending. Um, and you can see that this reflects, uh, data from the twenty-twenty-one, uh, and twenty-twenty-two school year. We just finished administration of this survey, the window just closed, um, at the end of February, I'm sorry, at, at the end of, uh, January. And will, we expect to receive results, uh, on this survey in March, and we'll be able to share that with the board and the public. Another measure that we, uh, introduced last year was, uh, professional learning, um, communities. And this is where teachers meet, uh, to analyze data and to determine what needs, um, students have and to, uh, for inform instruction. Uh, this is the second year that we've been implementing this process to collect data. Uh, and so far you can see that eighty-seven percent of the time, uh, that we're meeting, uh, the monthly PLCs. Uh, and when we are meeting, we're using data eighty-nine percent of the time to inform, uh, instructional shifts. So ninety-one percent of those PLCs are leading to instructional decisions. Uh, so that means that we're, uh, planning next steps for our students. Some of the actions and services that are tied to goal one include, uh, professional learning opportunities for our teachers and administrators. Um, our professional learning that we've provided is centered around our three academic success drivers, which are collaborative practices, uh, cognitive rigor and academic discourse. Um, our teachers on special assignment have done a fabulous job of partnering with our staff to ensure that we are providing, uh, support and, uh, job embedded coaching, uh, to, uh, make instructional shifts in the classroom. We've also, uh, had our, uh, teachers on special assignment provide demonstration lessons, um, and protocols where they're analyzing data, uh, with administrators, um, and with teachers as well. Some of the course offerings that are tied, uh, to goal one include offering Spanish, um, and art at the middle school and also offering Latinx studies at all of our, uh, high schools. Some of the purchases that, uh, some of the purchases that we aligned, um, are, um, supplemental materials and supplies, um, and focused on literacy and also on, uh, science. Uh, this next slide shows you expenditures that are tied to goal one as of January twenty-twenty-three. Um, and you can see that we are within budget, uh, for, uh, goal one. Our second goal, uh, for, uh, LCAP is to increase and improve, uh, the district's partnership with our parents and our students. Um, we, uh, value, um, partnership with our community and we want to ensure that we're working collaboratively, uh, to create these opportunities and that we're increasing, uh, opportunities for our families and our students to be leaders, um, in our districts and at our school sites. Some of the metrics that are tied to goal one include, um, student engagement. Here you see, uh, our attendance rate that is a current rate as of December twenty-twenty-two. Um, this is an ongoing measure that continuously change, changes as, uh, attendance changes. Um, you also see that we are, uh, monitoring chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, expulsion rate, high school and, uh, middle school dropout rate, and these are also as of December twenty-twenty-two.
Can I ask a question regarding the attendance rate? So I think thirty percent is very high in, um, absenteeism. Do we have anything that, um, incentives or do the schools, and, and I know the elementary, I, I see it a lot, but I think it's very important that we continue, um, middle school and also the high school. But, you know, incentives and, and do things that, that can bring them to school. Is there, um, are we still using the pandemic rationale behind it or are we?
Well, we were definitely affected by the pandemic. Um, it's a shift and it's a concern that's across the state in terms of chronic absenteeism. We're at par with the state and with surrounding districts. Um, we do, uh, look at chronic absenteeism as an area of need. Um, our ed services team is looking at it through different lenses. Uh, so we have, for example, our student support services director is working with, um, his staff to reestablish, um, attendance um, and our act, SART and SARB process at the school site. Um, we're also looking at it up through the lens of our multilingual and categorical director who's working for community liaisons to really work on outreach, um, and to share communication with, um, families and to provide, uh, anything that might be a barrier to have our students come to school. Our, uh, school administrators are working with their staff to not only identify these students, but also to provide, uh, opportunity for mentorship or, um, in, in the case you mentioned, to provide incentives for attendance, but it is something that we need to really continue to focus on, uh, because the more students are here, the more they're going to learn. But it's a definitely, uh, a team approach as we look at chronic absenteeism as an area for our district.
So, so do we have a percent of, um, do we have many truancies or are they just absent, ill absent? Or, you know, what is the reason why they're not, do, do we have a chart or something that says that?
The reasons can vary, um, but the way a student qualifies, uh, to be chronically absent is that they're, uh, absent ten percent of the instruct, of the days that they're enrolled. Uh, so that's what, when they hit that threshold of ten percent, then they're considered chronically absent.
So, so you are still doing the, the SART and the SARBS and all that's, uh, continuing?
We are, um, but it's about, um, sharing that information with our communities. Um, because we, during the pandemic, we weren't, um, using that, so it, it's going to be a process. But we are looking, uh, to make sure that all the sites are following the protocols, um, that are associated with it, a SART, uh, act, and a SARB process.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, another question regarding, um, those the apt, uh, since students have been absent, I mean, they may need from high school, middle school, elementary, and, um, if you're tennis technicians, are they trained, you know, to, to, what to look for and, you know, I'm very concerned about.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's a huge concern and, um, we were just looking at this, uh, data point recently with our administrators and we did notice that, um, the highest rates are with our little sprite with our TK and kinder students. Um, so, you know, it's sharing that, uh, the importance of being here and learning and setting that foundation in, in the primary grades, especially as they're learning to read, right? And, um, so it's sharing that information and, and making parents aware. Um, I know through ELAC and through School Site Council, uh, principals are sharing, uh, this data point, uh, to make sure that everyone's aware of the importance of.
And, and I, I recall that we had a, um, was it like a campaign for attendance? We had that, right, before? I think we need to bring that back.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Great point. It was September.
Yes, I can recall. Thank you.
Your questions. Okay, another, um, next slide, please. Another, uh, metric that is aligned to goal two is parent engagement. Um, here you'll see, uh, results from our annual youth youth survey. In twenty-twenty-two, we had one thousand six hundred and thirty-one parents, um, uh, respond to this survey. Um, and like I mentioned earlier, we just closed the survey window, so we'll be able to share updated results soon. Um, but based on this, we see that the majority of parents feel that they have input in decision-making um, and that sixty-nine percent of parents would recommend, um, Azusa Unified School District schools.
I think it's great that we, um, Azusa Unified gives the opportunity for parents to either participate in person or, um, virtual or even Google Meet. I noticed some coffee, the principals are either in person or they're virtual. Um, but they have that, even looking at the meeting, if they don't see it today, they can see it tomorrow or whenever. And I think they're doing a great job with that.
Absolutely. Um, this next slide, uh, shows, uh, the degree that students feel connected. Um, this is really important if we want to increase our chronic absenteeism, where we want our students to feel like they belong, uh, to our school community and that they're connected to an adult or to, um, uh, classmates. So when students have been asked if their voice is heard, we see here that forty-nine percent do feel that their voice is heard. Um, and you see the highest percentage for connectedness for our elementary students, but all three levels are above, uh, forty percent. Some of the actions and services that are aligned to this goal, um, include professional learning. Um, in the fall, we publicize ED one hundred, which is a parent engagement program, uh, that is in collaboration with, um, uh, ABE, and we, um, plan to also offer a second round of Project To Inspire, uh, which is, uh, something that shows our parents how to become engaged, how to be involved, how to ask the right questions. And so we, we hope to offer that, um, in the spring to our school communities.
That was great. I graduated from there, uh, when there was that foothill. And I think it was great information for the parents.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's good.
So some of the, uh, improvements that we've, uh, offered are additional materials and supplies, uh, transportation and, um, resources specifically for our cost. In terms of program implementation, we've, uh, shared information through our PAC plus, uh, committee, uh, through our D-LAT. Um, as a matter of fact, I'm presenting the D-LAT next week, uh, regarding LCAP. Um, and as well as, uh, with the support of our community liaisons to share, um, information with, uh, parents at each of our school sites. This next slide shows you the expenditures for supplemental and concentration funds for, uh, goal two. Our next goal is goal three, and this goal focuses on preparing our students for college and careers after high school. Uh, we want to make sure that we're offering a wide range of programs to our students. Um, uh, but we especially want to make sure that all student groups have an opportunity to participate in these programs, um, at the same rate. One of the metrics that's tied, uh, to goal three is perform, student performance on the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, which is also referred to as the SPECT test, um, in English, Language Arts and Math. Um, here you'll see that for eleventh grade students, forty-seven percent of the students were meeting or exceeding standards in English, Language Arts and nineteen percent in math. Um, we also take a look at local assessments, which are our district assessments. And for our eleventh graders, we have thirty-three percent meeting or exceeding standard in E, English, Language Arts and twenty-eight percent, uh, meeting or exceeding in math. Uh, here you'll see, um, another metric that's tied to goal three that is graduation outcomes. Um, you'll see both the, uh, seal of biliteracy and the completion of career technical education or what we call the CTE pathways, um, that students are working towards, uh, during the time that they were in high school. Um, this shows you that, um, we have as a graduation rate as well as one of our metrics. Um, you'll see that for our district, we are at eighty-seven percent graduation rate, um, and then each of the high schools are noted as well. This next, uh, metric is also focused on college preparatory programs that we offer in our district. Um, both the IB, uh, and AP classes take an exam each year. Uh, and last May, thirty-nine percent of our AP test takers, uh, passed with a three or higher, which is considered passing. Uh, and sixty-four percent of our, uh, IB students passed with the four, which is considered passing. Um, and then you'll see that, uh, in twenty-twenty-two, early college program seniors, uh, completed, uh, thirty or more units and that was at a rate of seven percent.
Ms. Garcia Medina, I have a question.
Okay, yes, Dr. Bo?
Um, what are our, uh, I see these are our metrics. What are the goals for these, um, pass rates and, and, uh, A through G requirements?
So if you, uh, refer to, uh, the written LCAP report, each of these metrics will have a three-year, um, at the end of the three-year, our target. Um, and so based on whatever metric we're looking at, we'll be able to, uh, see what the actual, um, target is for each of the goals. And you would be referring to, um, the table three point one, uh, page twenty-eight. Uh, so if you look at percent of graduates earning the seal of biliteracy, our target is twenty percent for that. After, at the end of three years. Uh, for percent of graduates completing a CTE pathway, our, uh, metric target is twenty-five percent for that. And then for graduation rate, our, our metric target is ninety-five percent. So we want ninety-five percent of our students, uh, to have, uh, graduated, uh, from high school.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I believe, um, Ms. Arianez had a question?
Yes, um, what is the, the total number of students in the International Back Track Program? At this moment right now, from, from this metric that you?
I don't have the actual number, but I can definitely, um, consult with our, um, College and Career Readiness Director and get that information to.
Can you also do all, all three, well?
All three programs?
Right, so the total amount of students in each one of them.
In each, uh, pro, well.
Thank you.
So our, our next slide? This slide looks at, um, actions and services that are tied, uh, to college and career, um, uh, our college and career goal. Uh, some of the professional learning, uh, course is training in the different programs we offer like Avid, IB, AP. Um, also, uh, counselors receiving professional learning. Some of the course offerings that we, uh, provide are district-wide summer school, um, our medical and engineering pathways, our IB and AP courses, our early college, uh, program courses. And then we provide material support programs as well. This next slide shows you the expenditures of supplemental and concentration funds that are tied to, uh, goal three, um, as of January twenty-twenty-three, and again, we are in budget, uh, with this goal. Uh, for the fourth goal, we're, uh, looking to increase student achievement for all students um, and to narrow any achievement gaps that may as exist between subgroups. Um, as well as a focus on, uh, increasing language acquisition, uh, and academic progress for our emerging, uh, multilingual students. Like some of our other goals, we are using, um, SPECT data results, uh, to measure progress. Um, this bar graph shows, uh, the twenty-twenty-two performance of our students in, uh, third through eighth grade and eleventh grade. Um, this is baseline data this year as, but we're not comparing to twenty-nineteen. Um, and this is going to help us identify what learning gaps, um, exist and how we need to, uh, support some of our subgroups. Um, if you'd like to see a detailed breakdown, uh, by school and by student subgroup, that can be found in the January, uh, written report. Uh, another measure that we use to, uh, measure progress towards this goal is third grade reading proficiency, uh, based on a local assessment that we give to our third grade students. And here you see the percentages of students meeting or exceeding standards, um, for all students and for some of the different, uh, subgroups that we're looking.
I have a question. So, um, when we assess the academic achievement in reading in third grade, do we follow the students as a cohort, just to, and assess their progress?
We, um, are able to do that. We're able to follow the students. Um, it might not be through the same assessment. Um, but we are able to, uh, use or illuminate, um, student information system or assessment system to pull data for, um, various groups of students, um, by different years.
Um, would, would you say that third, you know, after third grade, right? I mean, the, the education to prison pipeline, we, we understand it starts in third grade when we start seeing, right, the, the, the readings low, the interventions are not put in place or, or basically sometimes a family doesn't take the interventions. Um, what, what does it look like if, if we were to, to start? What would it look like if we were to start having a cohort and following that cohort? Have we ever? So typically, we follow the cohort over time as well. So if you look at this particular graph, this is based on the data that we gathered in December twenty-twenty-two. So they take this proficient, reading proficiency assessment three times in each grade level. So what happens is, is that cohort of third graders and that data that we're looking at, they will continue to take the same assessment adjusted to their grade level. Um, but we use that data formatively, so the teacher uses the data, one, to determine their proficiency and two, to find where there's gaps. So is the student lacking in fluency? It's the student lacking in vocabulary comprehension? So we look at all of those aspects of what entails reading proficiency to be able to determine where the student needs are. Um, but we do start administering this assessment as early as kindergarten because we want to close those gaps early because as you explained, it becomes more challenging to close those gaps as the students move on. But we do continue to monitor that reading proficiency through high school. I, I would, I would like to take the opportunity and sit down, um, who, you, you used to do it before, right? So it's, uh, um, what is? Correct name. It's for emerging multilingual, it's Krista and then Adriana kind of handles the all, so it's a collaboration. And kind of explore this a little more.
Absolutely. We, uh, do have, um, regular PLC opportunities where we look at this data with our site administrators and we look at the different subgroups and we look, uh, at the difference between fall and winter and spring. So I'd be more than happy to sit down and explore with.
When's a good month where you, you think you would have majority of the?
Any month. Any month or we'll make it work.
Of it. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Appreciate it. This next slide shows you another metric that's tied to goal four. And it's specifically the percent of students receiving A, B, and C grades earned by our ninth graders. And as you probably are aware, you know, evidence shows that if they are earning A, Bs, and C grades, they're more likely to graduate and be prepared for college and to meet those college and career readiness metrics. Also, measure reclassification rate of our emerging multilingual students. And that is when a student demonstrates that they are fluent in English. And here you see the reclassification rate as of December, which was at nine percent. This is an ongoing metric because we continue to reclassify our students throughout the year. Actions and services that are tied to this goal again include professional learning opportunities for our staff, specifically to support our multilingual learners through the Sobrato Early Academic Language SEAL Program, as well as job embedded coaching for our staff members. Some of the course offerings that are tied to this goal include intervention and academic acceleration when appropriate, offering music at all levels to increase that engagement, as well as the Spanish dual-language immersion program at our various sites. This slide shows you expenditures for supplemental and concentration funds that are tied to goal four. Our final goal is goal five, and this is tied to our district's implementation and focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We want to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our community and our students and that we're building our ability to support our, our community and that we're diminishing systemic racism. This next slide shows you results from our district annual youth booth survey. And it asks questions about our students, about their experiences in our district. And we here are looking at the perception of how our districts and schools value diversity, as well as how districts and schools encourage our parents, our staff, and our students to speak out against racism. This next slide helps us measure students' comfort level, speaking about diverse groups. And you have there the different diverse groups that we refer to. And we hope that as we continue to share actions and services and programs with our students, that these efforts will lead to increased percentages in, in these areas. This next slide shows you the staff's perspective in terms of their comfort level, speaking out about diversity. Here you see on a scale of five, the different levels for elementary, middle, and high school. And they're about mid-range to the higher range of out of five, as well as staff's opportunity to learn about culturally relevant teaching strategies. So in order to feel comfortable to speak on these topics, they need to be able to feel comfortable when they're teaching these topics. Some of the actions and services that are tied to goal five include some workshop and training opportunities that were provided by the Western Justice Center, which are focused on restorative practices, which include peer mediation, restorative circles, and student leadership, increasing those opportunities. The school sites, we've offered the ethnic studies and the Latinx studies at our high schools. We've purchased classroom libraries and school libraries to support these topics with diverse authors and shared stories with our, our students that reflect some of this learned. The next slide shows you the expenditures that are tied to the school as of January 2023. And again, we're within budget. The next slide shows you what our next steps are as we continue to engage our community with the LCAP process. This will be happening in the next few months. This update is shared with the board tonight. And then we also share this with our site administrators and teachers at different meetings. We ask our principals to share this update with their parents as well as with their staff. We also share this at our PAC Plus meeting, our Student Advisory Council, and our D-LAC committee meeting. We also post this report on our district website for parents and the community access, as well as making it available via links through our social media. I appreciate your time in listening to the progress that we've made towards the LCAP. We have the remainder of this year and one more year to go before we start to inform our next LCAP plan. And just want to open it up to any additional questions.
I have, I have several questions. But I wonder if others have any questions that they want to ask first, that way? Anyone else? Okay. President Bo, did you have any questions?
No, this time. Go ahead.
Okay. So. First, I have some questions about just some of the details and some of the results. Because I appreciate the sharing out of the information. But, but we have not yet really talked about like interpreting the data as, as far as what, what do we think about this, or what does this mean, or how do? So for example, if we go to page three of the presentation, we see that it says seventy-nine, our facilities inspection results are seventy-nine percent. So if that, that means twenty-one percent, or somehow, you know, we're at seventy-nine percent, and so there's twenty-one percent missing. What does that account for? What, what, what does that mean that we're not doing if we're at seventy-nine percent as opposed to, you said the target is ninety?
Ninety percent.
I could take that one. So when the outside agency come in, they look at everything even to the E of chip. So if there's a chip paint or if they went by a desk and there was a chipping there, they was markers down on it because they're considering that, meaning we need to monitor that, make an adjustment if it or fix that.
Do we have any kind of data that says? Of the, of the areas where we were, where we were docked, where we're seeing that the percentage of those kind of areas that were docked is, is here in this, in these categories or those categories?
Yes. So the full report, they give us a detailed report for each school site. And based on the report that we, that we received last year, that is part of our goal of increasing our night custodians that can assist us and reimagining of how we care, because some of it is just cleaning this as well. It's not even that something is broken and fixed, it's just, is this clean? Do we have gum on a floor or vice versa? So and we do have a plan. Our goal is by when we're increasing our staff at our school sites, that will also help us achieve our actual.
Okay. Another question I have on page nine, the high school dropout rate is, is listed at nine percent. What, what do we do? What, what, what do we do if, if we see that there's a, if there's a student that has, that has dropped out? What is our, what is our follow-up to that?
So depending on the particular situation, sometimes the course of action is aligning the student to some of the resources that are available through adult education, either additional courses that they may be missing, or taking the high set. Or, you know, what other options are available to, to that student depending on what their situation is. So it's really, you know, bridging that collaboration piece between what resources we have available at the school site. There's also, depending on the particular student, an option for a fifth year, depending on what amount of credits they're short. And often, the dropouts that we see tend to be our students who are our migrant, or not our migrant, our immigrant students. So really, it's bringing them some support for developing English language. And we really try to tie them to some of the resources at the Adult Education Center because there is an opportunity for them to take the high set in Spanish and then also take their ESL courses to develop their English fluency as well.
I see.
That's a question, board member, just regarding that. So. Before they, they, they go to Sierra, we'll say Sierra, because it may need credit recovery. So what do we do to help until? They won't become dropout, you know, they, they'll end up at Sierra High and they'll end up graduating. You know, who monitors them and who gives them that direction that they have that opportunity to do just that?
So there's a, there's a couple of entry points into that. So one of the data points that we look at is that DNF rate, right? So we monitor the students who are getting Ds and Fs, and we start looking at that at the middle school. And counselors start to meet with students, meet with families to get the students on track before they get into high school. And then we are part of, it's called On Track. It's a collaboration with California Ed Partners where we look specifically at ninth grade students who are in that transition from middle school to high school and at that entry point to high school and look at their DNF rates and begin to look at where we need to close some gaps for them so that they don't become credit deficient and fall into that space where they are then feeling like.
And that also has to do with the attendance, you know, on big, big time on, on their grades. But, and I think it's important that we do educate parents when they're in eighth graders, like when you go to high school, it's not just, you can just miss, and this is credit, you're, you know. You miss or you get a certain grade, you don't get too many credits. I think they, I'm not sure how we're educating our parents, so, and the student, to know that once you're in high school, it's not like you're in elementary or kindergarten. Where you come or you go, or you, you know, it's, it's their career, it's their future. And I think it's important that we need to set the tone for them.
I agree.
I see the board president has her hand up.
Thank you. This is a piggyback question to Mr. Greer's question around the facilities report. Ms. Ramal, how, how do our facilities inspection reports, the metrics we have here, how are those tied into the Williams reporting and/or our SARC reports?
Great question. So we have one agency that we have that comes, that completes the entire fit, which is the Williams inspection for all of our site, and that's us going over and beyond. And then we utilize, we pass that information onto our site so they can incorporate those metrics into the SARC. Additionally, Laco also completes some William inspections as well, only for our schools has been flagged by them.
So with our, our current facilities rating, is, is Laco satisfied that we remedy the deficiencies?
So it's not, I'm still stuck. It's not a report that we report out to Laco to see if we remedy, that's for us internally. So we are currently utilizing the detailed report that we have to create goals and objectives for us to attend to. So some, like I said before, was chip paint, so we already have on our facilities plan of how we're, when we're painting out our site. Not everything can be achieved at this specific moment because of other things that have the, have prerequisites. But that's how we're setting up our, when we outline the facility needs plan, when we said, okay, based off the safety, these are some things that had to be attained to. Some of it is our classroom furniture, based on if the end of life, the size of our furniture, and that will be achieved once we purchase our district-wide classroom furniture that the board approved last year. So I'm not sure if that answers the question, Dr. Bo.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll have a few more questions, and, and still on goal two. I also see that on pages, on page eleven of the presentation, it talks about the degree to which students feel connected and that their voice is being heard. Looking at, I mean, high school in particular, and, and, and even with the student voice, like I, I think in this you said, it appears that all of them are above forty percent, but forty percent, that would, that would seem very low to me that. And so I would see it as, you know, sixty percent of our high school students don't feel that they're connected or that they belong. And that's, that's a significant, that's a significant amount of our high schoolers that don't feel connected or, or that they belong. And same for student voices being heard, fifty-one percent, over half of our students are saying that they don't feel like their voices are, are being heard. I know that we, I, I know that there's, there are, there are initiatives that we put in place to for students to be able to share their voices. Are we comparing this to previous years to be able to say that even from an iterative growth standpoint that, you know, we were at forty-six percent and now we're at forty-nine percent, so we are growing and, and students' voices are, they are feeling their voices are being more and more heard? Or is it, it's, have we put initiatives in place and we're kind of stagnant? These again are just some, some data points that I think are, are concerning and, and, and warrants just the question, what do we do about this? And how do we assess? If there are things that we've already been doing, how do we assess if those things are working and/or if we need to do other things?
There was a, a small increase from, for that particular, those particular data points that you identified from our 2020 Youth Truth Survey to 2021. And then we'll be interested to see what this year's data looked like. But one of the, the pieces that we put in place this year is in a partnership through the On Track work is our high school principals and high school teachers identified target students to really look at and focus and build some relationship. And, you know, they identified check-in times, like a monthly check-in time to help the students feel more connected. We know that distance learning did create more of a barrier for students, and, you know, we, we are still, you know, we don't want to keep saying the pandemic, but we have to be, you know, recognized that there were some barriers for students that occurred through distance learning. So we are still in that recovery mode, and we are very attuned to looking at how are we, one, creating a space where students feel that their voices are being heard, and how are we carving out opportunities for them to voice their opinions? And also, again, you know, how are we finding opportunities to connect with them, build up, build relationships?
Thank you. Yeah. And moving on to, to goal three, this, this information is on the page fifteen. So when it, when it talks about just meeting standards, it's, it's both local and also SPECT standards. Same, same question in essence, just around, okay, how, how do we see the ways that this compares to the previous years? And, and is the, even if it's ever so slightly, is the needle, is the needle moving forward? And how do we reflect that? How, how can we, when we report these things out, report it out in such a way that it gives us, if, if we have, this is the second year of our, of our LCAP to show, this is where we started and, and, and this is what the trend is showing, I think would be, would be a, a helpful thing.
I'd like to say something, Board Member Greer. As we were going through the presentation, I also felt the same way. Is how do you compare this even pre-pandemic years, right? As a newer board member, I mean, those are things that I would like to see so that we can assure that we are making progress for our students. I mean, that's something that, you know, just looking at it in retrospect, that, that's what, something that makes me an opener.
So as Adriana Garcia Medina has already noted, that, those data points are in the big report. They go back to eighteen nineteen. But as Adriana Garcia Medina will tell you, I think she's heard it seven thousand four hundred and eighty-nine times when she's in webinars and reading, that right now there is a lot of caution given out to districts, particularly in this data point that we're speaking about, to fight the urge to compare to the past because of that large gap of that suspension that happened. But nonetheless, in the big report, we do put from eighteen nineteen forward for all of our metrics, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Whatever metric that we're discussing, some are newer, so like Latasha was saying with the fit. And I think that's great, right? Why only the schools that are Williams? Why are they only getting fit inspected? Like, we should all be fit inspected. Youth Truth is a relatively newer instrument as well, but that'll be noted in the, in the report.
Can I ask a question? Board Member Gray?
So I'm going to the the metric twos regarding the Youth Truth Survey. Students have not been heard. Are we talking about males, females? Students like are the participate in ASV or in programs or your your male child? And and unlike what Norma mentioned, that, you know, teachers are identifying them. Well, I think they need to identify them more, not only teachers. I mean, even, you know, because you see someone sitting alone, you know, and 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 I'm curious to see, again, if it's your either the girls, is it the boys? It's it, it's it. Who are we talking about here? We just see a number, but who exactly who are we talking about?
The number that you see here that's being reported is all students. But we do have the ability to desegregate the data by subgroup, male, female. So each of the school sites can look at their school-specific data, but this is putting it all together.
I think that would be interesting for to us to have that data. And and just my second question, so when they take this survey, did they take it during English class or when did they take this?
They take it during the school day. At the elementary level, you know, it's the self-contained classroom, so it's with their teacher.
Right.
At the secondary level, they pick a course and that's the course that administers the survey. And we track, you know, progress in terms of when they're completing the survey.
And then you mentioned, obviously, not all students are taking it. Because the the number you gave us is not as amount of students that we have in at our school.
It's third and.
But what I'm just saying, so the but the numbers that you, what you mentioned, one thousand six hundred?
That was specifically to parents who completed the survey last year.
Yeah, I I think it'd be nice to have the data on. Thank you.
President Bo.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question for slide ten regarding parent satisfaction in terms of recommending Azusa Unified Schools. Do we have the qualitative data if regard, you know, if parents submitted comments regarding what they were or were not, were not happy with regarding the district? And have have we taken a look at that data?
We we do have a comment section, but it's it's general, it's not tied to each of the specific subtopics, but that is available in the Youth Truth Reports that's available by site and also at the district level.
So we, have we analyzed the comments for for findings or themes?
We we do. When we receive the results from Youth Truth in March, they come and they do a presentation and they work with our school site administrators to interpret the data, to plan next steps in terms of sharing the data with the community, with their staff and their parents. What we're doing additionally this year, which is, I think, going to be a, something great, is that each principal is going to be meeting with a one-on-one in person online session actually with Youth Truth to go over their specific school data. So that that'll give us more tools in terms of how we're sharing out information and what our next steps are to bridge some of those gaps.
Thank you. And as a follow-up question, I I can't remember exactly what what topic the district had asked of parents. But what was our last application of the the Thought Exchange Platform?
The last application was around the topic that we have tonight, which is the Azusa High School mascot.
Okay. I I would like to see if there's a way that we could use the Thought Exchange Platform to get deeper into this specific question about parents recommending or not recommending Azusa Schools.
We can definitely definitely do that.
Thank you.
So I do, I do have a few more questions still, and so please, my colleagues, interject if if there's any questions in between. And would it be possible actually to jump to the slides as as we're we're talking to them so that those at home can can follow along? So I'm, we were on page fifteen, if we could jump down to page seventeen? So I'm I'm just curious here, looking, looking at this, it says that for twenty twenty-two, seniors completing thirty or plus units. Can you remind us all, what is the upper end, upper end amount of units that that a student would have been able to, units that a student would have been able to receive if they'd been in the this this program throughout their time?
So that the thirty-plus is based on them starting at eleventh grade. So next year, we're launching students being able to begin that in ninth grade, so they'll be able to earn up to sixty.
Up to sixty, okay. So starting next year, up to sixty will be the upper end limit?
Correct, for ninth graders. So that program will launch for that, the ninth grade cohort. So the students who are reflected here entered at eleventh grade.
And so that means that for for those students who entered at eleventh grade, what is the upper end limit that would have been available for them?
I believe it's thirty, but I'll bear.
Okay, okay.
And then just for clarification, so next year, there'll be two entry points, correct? So there'll be a ninth grade entry point. And I believe Mr. Fernandez has already said that those applications and those interest forms are super high. But then, because that's starting at ninth grade, we will still have the eleventh grade entry point as well, so as not to miss students along the way.
And that will continue or that's just for this upcoming year? There will be two entry points moving forward?
That I I'm not sure, I I, we haven't thought it through. Probably it has to be at least for two more years at least. So that, again, we're not missing students who might have missed a, an entry point.
Yes, on on page seventeen, I I had asked for a total amount of students in the program and how many completed it. Right? For for all three. I would like to also, you know, having a conversation of having past data to be able to compare, right? Moving forward, since we're going to be moving into one high school, I I think it would be would be great if we could have it, like, you know, start like a three-year study to assess the strengths and the weaknesses of each of the programs at the high school level, since we are going to have IB, we're going to have dual immersion, no, dual enrollment. Excuse me.
Eventually dual immersion.
Right, right. Right, and since we are starting, this is like historic here, we we're starting our our dual enrollment at ninth grade. And so with this new program coming through, I I would like to see a three-year study moving forward to be able to see the strengths, the weaknesses of each program and how we can improve and tailor it to the needs of our our children.
Board Member Ariana, we have been pretty transparent about the fact that we're merging the two schools. And for right now, we are looking to have all of the programs that exist at Glasson High School come over to Azusa High School. But to your point, we do agree that after they have, after the programs have existed at the one high school and giving them an opportunity to take root and to grow, and we're not talking just about these here, we're talking about pathways as well, right? Those kinds of things. Then we we have to make decisions if the data is pointing one way or the other. But therefore, initially, we would give all of the programs an opportunity to to grow, thrive and and take roots.
Absolutely, I think that that was my point. For us to start this news as we're transitioning into one high school, as we're transitioning to a new, you know, new middle school as we are downsizing. And what does that look like for our students? So that way we can strengthen, see the weaknesses, see the strengths, see where the gap, where we need to merge most of the gaps. Right, we're we're going to go into a new era, people here, like, I'm so excited to, you know, to to be able to do this. One more thing, we we, I know that we spoke about this before, I don't know in what in what meeting, but what what are we, what are we doing to to excite our our neighbors about our new middle school? You know, are this this ribbon cutting, are are we inviting our, you know, our other elected officials and COVID and Glendora, you know, even the elected officials? Even if it's not, you know, the parents right now, this is just tomorrow, right? You know, we we should be able to invite other school board members, other superintendents, teachers and so forth, right? And other parents from other districts, because I'm getting all of the mailers from other districts and seeing how exciting and programs that they have going on. And I I would like to, you know, as we're moving into this era, let's talk about, let's have a conversation about that. You know, how big do we want our mailer? Do we want to be published in the LA Times and, you know, San Gabriel Valley? But anyhow, moving forward, I would like to go ahead and start to see this data compiling and present, you guys can come and present a couple of years and see what happens. Thank you.
So I'm almost, almost done here. If we look at page twenty-two, the twenty-second slide, it's just the same question, but different, different categories, but but the exact same question looking at at this. And so, yes, forty-one percent of all, forty-nine percent of all students, third grade students are meeting this, that means fifty-one percent are not. And similar to on page twenty-eight, the diversity and idea about speaking out against, excuse me, speaking out against racism. I I'd say the same thing, this this kind of reminds me to, yeah, students who feel connected or feel that their voice is being heard. This is just another one of those, not not necessarily academically connected areas, but but how do we? What 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 are we doing? And also, how does this compare to to, as we look at previous years? And and then the overarching thing that I I just say, and I I feel like I've said a little bit of this along the way, which is, yeah, how do we interpret this? Like, when we, when we look at this, look at this data, there are certainly some things here that are that are are not, that are concerning. And and as we look at the things that are here that are concerning, what what are the ways, so for us as a, as a board, who we don't, we're not, it's not our job to get into the, so the, to the weeds of of how all this is implemented, but it, but it is for us to look at these at at this data and see how things are progressing. And so for us to be able to receive this data in such a way that that we can look and when I see this and I see it's forty-nine percent, but if, but if this was twelve percent, again, if it's twelve percent before and now we're up to forty-nine percent, this is huge. We should, we need to, we, let's celebrate this. But without being able to really compare it to previous years or 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 being able to see the larger picture, it it just appears concerning. And so I'm I'm wanting to keep that, I'm wanting to keep it in 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 context. And 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 just ask, yeah, what do we do? And that's a, that's a broad question that I'm asking. And so I'm I'm not, I'm not necessarily asking specifics for each one of these things that we do. But I guess I am saying from year to year, when we get this data, how does this impact what initiatives we put in place for the following year so as to actually make improvements? Because if we don't, then we we shouldn't be surprised if we don't see certain increases and and improvements from year to year.
That's a, that's a great question. And that's exactly the point of when we examine this data is it does inform what are, what are our next steps as we move forward? So some of the work that we're looking at in terms of our DEI committee is, you know, when we look at, I don't remember what slide it was, but, you know, students comfort level, speaking about diverse groups. We are looking at some potential trainers to come to support groups. And and how do, how do we have these kinds of conversations? So exactly to your point, when we look at this data, it, you know, gives us an indicator. But also, what are some areas that we need to move on? And what are some things that, you know, when we have our supplemental concentration dollars, what do they need to be focused on so that we ensure that we are closing those gaps for those specific students? So that we don't, you know, continue to see some of the things that we don't want to see.
And those are all my questions, President Bo.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I I'm looking at this slide thirty. I see here it says that staff's comfort level for speaking about diversity, that diversity, equity and inclusion. I guess for me, I'm just curious to see what type of study or survey was given to them. I don't know if we can be transparent about that. And then also, how do we measure the children feeling comfortable about that? I'm trying to understand that.
So the topics are specific questions that are in the Youth Truth Survey. There's a section on diversity, equity and inclusion. And there are questions that are specific to, for example, you mentioned diversity. There's a question specifically type of diversity and we take the percentage from there.
Is there a way to get a copy of that or?
Yeah, we can provide you a copy of the report. And then again, when we receive our new results in March, we'll be sharing that with the board as well. So these responses were in twenty twenty-two, so last spring. But we're, we should be receiving in March, the survey that just closed. So we'll have something to to look at, to compare.
And and the survey that's given to the students or the questions, is that also available?
Yeah, the questions are listed, so you can look at the survey by topic or you can look by specific questions. And then we can desegregate the data and look at specific subgroups by question. So there's a lot that we can do with it.
Is there a way I can get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
And I realize I I want to make sure that I also say thank you very much. Like, one of the, this is, it takes, it takes work to to synthesize this data and to provide this data, to to provide us with the information to know what steps to take and 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 where we need to focus and and, you know, where our strengths are and and where our areas of growth are. But I want to make sure that I'm saying thank you for for the work that that's here. And yeah, I'm I'm excited to see us continue to utilize this data and roll up our, continue to roll up our sleeves to, you know, provide the 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 best opportunities and and and, you know, potential for for growth for our students that we possibly can. So thank you for for the presentation.
Any further comments by the board?
I just want to also extend my gratitude. Working in marketing, I I know data collection and being able to to do all this is is a lot of work. And I know that we're asking for more work. But thank you for being so flexible and accommodating to our, to, you know, to our questions and and we appreciate you.
Friends together, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, I just want to echo Board Member Greer and Adriana's comments with respect to just saying, we appreciate you for your work and the staff as well.
Board Member Rodriguez, any final comment?
You did a great job in cabinet and I know we worked together very well to make this happen. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item three point two, budget proposal update. Ms. Jamal, will this be your item?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So good evening, Dr. Bo, Board of Education and members of Cabinet. Tonight I will be presenting a bu- budget update based off the January's governor's budget presentation that we attended in January. So here we're outlining the governor's proposed budget. One of his main key goal is that the governor is focused on maintaining the programs where as possible and trimming down some. So far, based on the governor's current projections, the only reduction we will see is in one of our categorical grants. So here we have the Prop ninety-eight resources and and also outlining the key goals that we're finding in the governor's budget. He will maintain the purchasing power of our LCFF, which is our local control funding. He will continue to fund transitional kindergarten, that is one of his goals and initiatives. Also, the budget further, furthers equity equity shortfalls, I'm going to use that word, for closing the learning gap. This is a new funding line that the governor is proposing this year for LCFF. And also, Governor Newsom will be making a reduction of about thirty-five percent in one of our our arts and music grants.
What does that look like for our district? For the reduction in arts and music?
So so was risky. So first of all, if we lose it, that's approximately, I'm going to say our allocation is almost two million. And then so it'll be thirty-five percent of that. Where it's risky is is that all districts were awarded their allocation last fiscal year. And it will be next fiscal year where they'll make the decision if we have to send back funds. The one good thing about our district is that we had a spending plan and we did not spend everything. Um, the one good thing about our district is that we, um, had a spending plan and we did not spend everything at once. So we wouldn't be having to cut some programs, but we are also hopeful that this is not materialized. But as of right now, it will be a thirty-five percent reduction in the arts and music.
And do we, do we, um, do we get grants? Or arts and music? Have we gotten any grant?
We do. We currently have a grant and an art, visual art specific grant um, through a collaborative. And I believe there's one other. I could be wrong. I'll double check on that.
Thank you. So, hold on, Latasha. Okay, here we go. I apologize. So, um, this is the LCFF overview. So we have three, um, funding changes are, um, that we're excited about. One, um, from first interim to now, we have an increased COLA. Um, at first interim, our projected COLA for next year was five point three six. Um, this year, right now, is projected to be an eight point one-three percent COLA. Um, the governor is also adding that equity multiplier, um, which is based off each specific school. Um, one at a secondary, I mean, elementary level and two at a, um, secondary level. Um, for our secondary schools, if our free percentage of our student population is eighty-five percent, we will receive additional funding. And our elementary schools, if our free population is over ninety-five percent, we would receive additional funding. At this time, we would not receive those fundings because we have a high population of reduced, um, families and not free families. So we're hoping that, um, if there's a trend that this does not materialize, meaning that a lot of LEAs can receive the funds. The governor will change his position, but right now it's based off each individual school to receive this additional fund. We also have our categorical funds. Um, this year, um, the governor is going to actually apply the COLA to some of our categoricals. Typically in the past, the COLA is typically only applied to LCF funding. So we're excited about that. And I will show which of our categorical funds will receive this. So this side is just, I'm outlining the equity multiplier. Um, again, the goal of the multiplier is to, um, close the achievement gaps, also to allow us to do additional, um, uh, funding resources, um, fulfill prior commitments. It's not as restrictive to spend the funds, but it is very, um, challenging to receive the funds to qualify for the fund. So here are the categorical funds that we, we'll receive, um, that we actually have, that we will, um, receive the COLA of eight point three percent. That is our nutrition services, our mandated block grant, our special, special education fund from the state only and state preschool. And here is just outlining, um, the funding that we receive. So our cost of living COLA will be tied. It will also forward on to our grade span adjustment. We receive grade span adjustment for grades TK through three, as well as ninth through twelve. It'll also increase our supplemental concentration, which will also increase our unduplicated. And the reason why it's showing a, a pillar is because our base grant actually feeds into the other category of funding. So now I'm going to outline what this all means specifically for our district. So at first interim, this is showing the change in COLA. So we're excited. The COLA for this year signed, we won't be changing, but the COLA for, the projected COLA for twenty-three, twenty-four is projected to increase to eight point three, but you'll also see a projected decrease in COLA in the out years from four, um, percent at first, um, interim to three point five four, um, and going to twenty-six, twenty-seven. We were projecting a three point five eight percent COLA and right now it's projected to be a three point two-three COLA. For the first time in a long time, both Department of Finance and School Services is actually aligned. Um, but they are telling us that that is because, um, both have the potential of us seeing it may revise a reduction. If the recession were to hit, but right now everyone is feeling hopeful that we will get through, um, may re- revision and we'll, um, eight point three will materialize. But it's the out years that we're done. Um, here is just showing our enrollment and ADA projections. There's no change. Um, but just so going forward, all of our funding that we receive on LCFF is based on, predicated either on our enrollment or our average daily attendance. So this is just for, um, con- context, just to see where we were at first interim. And these are the, um, factors that we'll be utilizing for the rest of this presentation. So we're going to start breaking down and dissecting our local control funding formula. Yes, ma'am.
And then enrollment ADA, the blue is the enrollment. Can we go back to the?
Yes, ma'am.
And the ADA is orange. For our viewers at home, can you explain that a little more?
Yes. So the blue identifies the students that are actually enrolled in our district. Um, the ADA is the average daily attendance. So we're funded on every day. We receive funding based on every day a student is actually in class. We do not receive funding just because they enrolled in our district. So the more the students are absent, the less our funding. Um, we projected all of our ADA, typically we're about a ninety-five percentile. And right now we're realizing our ADA has dropped down to about ninety to ninety-one percent.
Do we have any, um, I know I've said this before, but I haven't seen it. Um, campaigns for our attendance, since it is dropping, do we have like campaigns to, um, get parents? You know, riled up like, right, all on time and you know, it's cool. I, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am. So.
So we're, we are, um, as Adriana had shared a little earlier, when we were talking about chronic absenteeism. We have been paying a lot of attention to the data where, you know, there are some um, specific needs and targeting those specific groups of parents. Um, and also through our ELEC meetings, you know, that's one of the required topics that we cover is the importance of attendance, the rules around attendance, um, and all of those kinds of things. Um, but we are definitely looking at that as a big push, um, to increase that, that attendance rate.
And we also brought, um, this up, we have, where we have our budget review committee. And we brought that, um, our decline in ADA with our union partners and seeing how we could partner with them to stress the importance of attendance. And we do have till April to get our attendance rate up by P two. Um, so we're, um, confident by sharing this data with our, um, principals and our administrators that we can try to figure out with the target. Um, figure out our target population. We're trying, we are seeing the trend is in our, um, TK kinder classes, so how we can educate our families to help them understand the importance of being in class.
So in another district, Elmani Union High, I think it's called, um, or Elmani City. I know that they have, um, child welfare and attendance, uh, directors, right? That have campaigns. So for example, they have, um, a, um, a hot dog and hamburger or, or, you know, whatnot, a celebration to the kids that have not, uh, been absent. Um, you know, incentives like that. So the child welfare and attendance director will launch the campaign. The parents, he will have a meeting with the parents and, you know, and that the target goal, and I can't remember, there's a slogan that they use. Um, so what happens is every child wants to come to this party. It's, it, it's a party and they're going to eat and, you know, have games. And, um, I think it was about a month ago. They had, uh, foam added to, to their, their little party. And so, oh, the kids were just, you know, were telling the teachers, I'm not going to, I, 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 I'm not sick. But, but I'm coughing a little bit, but, but I want, I want them to get a hundred percent. You know, and so just the incentive, just something small. And I know that we used to do this before, back in the day at Todd. When my twenty-year-old was there as a kindergartner, um, where PTA or the, you know, that principal that was there would launch and just, just that community, I would not see in other schools. So maybe food for thought that, um, food does bring people together. Um, a little hot dog or, or whatnot for a child is big to eat with their, you know, their other friends and have a, a bubble party or a foam party, you know, is big for them. And it's an incentive even for them and they will drag their parents to take. You know, like I want to hit that hundred mark to go to that part. So I don't know, food for thought, something that we can look forward to.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So we're going to go to our, um, LCFF. So this is our base grant. Um, this is the first of, um, several pillars that, um, make up our total LCF funding. Um, so this is outlining the amount that we receive per ADA. Um, so every student came to school every day. Um, taking into consideration of the COLA and TK, we will receive nine thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars for each student. Um, that would also be true if we go down to our ninth and twelfth graders. If they were at school every day, we would receive twelve, um, thousand dollars, um, for that student. Um, but again, every time a student is absent, this is decreased, um, on an average basis for our students. So taking this in consideration, based on our current projected funded ADA, our projected, um, LCFF um, base grant allocation for, um, next fiscal year is approximately seventy-three point six million dollars. Now we're going to go to our grade span adjustment, which is our next pillar for LCFF. So we received the grade span for grades TK through three, as well as grades ninth through twelve. Um, both were increased by the COLA. So we're going to receive additional seventy-seven dollars for grades TK through third. An additional twenty-three dollars for grades nine through twelve. That's going to make, um, the grade span adjustment for TK through third, a thousand dollars, thousand thirty. And for our ninth through twelve, we receive additional three hundred and twelve dollars. And again, this is also on, based on, um, ADA. But based on our funded, um, projected funded ADA for the next fiscal year, our total grade span adjustment that we will receive is approximately two point eight million dollars. Now we're going to look at our total, um, LCFF base grant allocation when we include the grade span adjustment plus the base funding, we are looking at approximately seventy-six point five million dollars in our base allocation. Um, this is important, um, because one is based off ADA, but two, our LCFF dollars, um, make up almost eighty-five percent of our funding allocation. That, um, how we pay for all of our resources for our district. Here's our supplemental concentration. Um, where this one is important, um, our supplemental concentration is a direct reflection of our current year ADA. Everything else is based off prior year, um, funding, um, prior year ADA, um, calculation that's given to us by the state, but our supplemental concentration is based on our actual ADA. Um, so if we receive, um, if we realize a decline, um, in ADA, our supplemental concentration will actually be impacted for the current fiscal year. Um, right now we're showing that we're projecting to receive, um, thirteen point five million dollars in supplemental allocation. For the concentration allocation is twelve point eight and for the concentration add-on is three point eight. All of our supplemental concentration funds are directly tied to our, um, LCAP plan, um, that was presented on earlier today. So now we're going to look at our total projected revenue, um, right now, based off the, um, LCFF base supplemental concentration add-on as well as our, um, um, our targeted, um, of inclusion, um, block grant, our transportation block grant. And our new, um, transitional kindergarten, um, grant, we are projected to receive a hundred and eight million dollars from LCFF from state revenue. Additional projected state revenue that we're slated to receive. We have our lottery dollars. Um, as you can see here, there is no increase in projected lottery. Um, we receive, um, a hundred and seventy dollars per ADA, um, for unrestricted, um, resources, um, that we could utilize for instructional materials. Um, but then we also receive sixty-seven dollars, um, in lottery funds for restricted that is, um, only allowable to be used for like textbook adoptions.
Just for clarity, once, um, on slide eighteen.
Yes, sir.
But to be tremendously clear here. As the years move on, we are, we are seeing the total base grow. And that's due to, I mean, just the number of these increases. And so that means that as we are projecting declined enrollment, we are still seeing our revenue go up, not go down.
Correct. Because, uh, for two factors, one, the COLA, so that will continue to grow. And right now this is based off of first interim projections. We were projecting ADA to maintain as ninety-five percent. But second interim, when we're one projecting the COLA, we'll still have the increase, but we will show not a constant increase because we're projecting our ADA. It'll be ninety percent flat until we have a change in our attendance.
Latasha, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What happens, uh, or at what point do you adjust these numbers? Let's say we don't, you know what I'm saying? So at what point does, does those numbers get adjusted?
Yes, that's a great question. Um, we, uh, adjust our numbers at both of our, um, interim reports. So our first interim. Um, if we receive any changes from the state, um, we, um, reflect it there. Um, and then after the January update, we present to the Board Education in March, the second interim, and that's when we utilize these factors to show what our new, um, net effect will be. You're so welcome.
Ms. Jamal, I have a question while we're still on slide eighteen.
Yes, ma'am.
For transportation, um, can you describe a little bit about what this, um, revenue stream supports specifically?
Yes. Um, so the, um, last three pillars are just, um, uh, add-ons that the governor gives us when they took away all of the categorical funds before LCFF was enacted. And basically what they did is whatever your district was receiving back in twenty thirteen, they just give you that amount flat. We currently, currently use the seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, um, to cover all of our school to school transportation. Um, we cover it for our fuel for our buses as well as our bus driver.
And with that, are we, um, exploring the possibility of electrifying our fleet?
Yes. So we, um, we've applied for a couple of grants. Um, right now is based on if you have diesel, um, buses. And right now we only had one in our fleet. So we're, um, waiting to see if we can at least get approved for that one. And then we're going to continue to work with our grant writer to continue to apply for more fleet.
And so I heard you say that one of our buses is diesel. Are the rest, uh, CNG or a different fuel?
Just a different fuel.
Okay.
That's your exact word.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
With, along those lines, um, looking at the new buses that are, um, what is it, uh? Electric, yes. Um, the district was speaking with, um, actually with BYD on that. Where, where is that conversation now? BYD, the, the company, select.
As, as, um, Latasha has referred to, we have been pretty aggressive in learning and looking, uh, for grants. Um, most of the grants are looking at districts that are, um, for lack of a better word, worse, in, in a worse state than we are. Because their, their fleet is closer to, uh, being all diesel. And so they're starting, they're starting with, those seem to be the districts that get funded first. Um, and so, but we are continuously keeping our eye out. We have our grant writer continues to be keeping her eye out as well, uh, to make sure that we don't pass up on an opportunity uh, for those, uh, particular grants.
Isn't the deadline twenty-thirty?
No.
No, not for us?
No, no, not.
Okay.
No, no. Um, but I also want to add, um, um, one thing where, um, by working with the grant writer, we, we have, um, allowed ourselves not to be like some of our other districts who, um, receive either the grant just for the infrastructure and to put up the, um, the charging station. Only to find out that the buses that they're going to purchase would not work on those. So we're trying to be strategic and be mindful and prudent on the, um, how we go about.
Just, what, what, I haven't heard of BYD. It's a, is that, that's a company that we work with or what does it sound?
That, that is a company that actually has the fleet of electric buses. Um, and they came to our district a few years ago. Um, and made a presentation and presented to, to the school. I'm sorry, the superintendent and, um, the assistant superintendent, I think it's before, um, he met.
I think they met with, um, Brian.
Brian, yes, yes, they met with Brian.
All right. And so this was our lottery funds. There's no projected increase, um, but this is based off annual ADA. Mandated block grant, um, is one of the resources that is going to receive the COLA. So we will see, uh, increase um, from going from thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cent for grades, um, K through eight. Right now TK is not included. Um, with a, um, projection increase from sixty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents to seventy-seven dollars for our grades nine through twelve. A mandated block grant is, um, the state's way of giving us some funding allocation for all the mandates that they put on. Um, but this amount that we received doesn't even touch the surface of all the mandates they put on our requirements, but this is their way. Um, they're still, I mean, they actually have a budget line of trying to actually true up and fund all the mandates, but as of right now, we have not seen that.
Latasha, I have a question on the lottery tick, lottery, lottery, um, allocation. What can you give me an idea, just a general idea of what? I don't know, what percentage do we spend on like unrestricted and then restricted? What kind of, maybe a little insight on what the unrestricted, most of that money goes spent on?
Instruction, all, all of the lottery funds have to be tied to some sort of instructional, whether it's instructional supplies or material. The restricted has to be instructional materials such as textbooks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So here we have our cow stirs and cow purrs. Cow stirs is not projected to have an increase, so we will not realize, uh, material change. We will still have to contribute nineteen point ten percent for all of our employees. Whereas cow purrs, we will continue to see an increase. And this slide is to show with that projected increase, um, we currently pay twenty-five point thirty, um, seven percent for, um, all of our cow purrs members, and that's based off their annual salary. for um all of our cow purrs members, and that's based off their annual salary. Um, so we will, we're projecting an increase of seventy-four, seventy-two thousand dollars in the next year um and going down um by forty-eight percent. But as of our um population, our employee population increases, this will also be a increase that we will materialize. So here we're gonna go to our multi-year projection. Um, we're gonna start with the um s- school services slide. Um, typically, um, we do not see what we're seeing in our current year, where we're currently seeing that the amount that we're receiving in the COLA um is able to han- um handle all of our statutorys. Um, so you'll see in the current year as well as in the next um twenty-two, twenty um four, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Um, with our projected eight point one three COLA, um we are projected to be able to handle the statutory increases, which will be the purrs and stirs increases. But that will slowly change when you go um based on the projections for twenty-four, twenty-five. With the smaller amount of COLA, our statutorys will continue to go up, our special ed costs will go up. So it will now go to have the reverse effect of, yes, we'll receive the COLA, but our statutorys are gonna exceed the amount that we're receiving in the COLA. And here is our um NYPD, and we're showing the current year plus four out years. Um, we continue to maintain that we're meeting our reserve requirement. Um, we do show that we are currently deficit spending. Um, um, but as I shared, our deficit spending is a structural deficit. Um, in order to not deficit spend, that means the revenue that you receive this year is the only revenue that you're gonna spend. Um, we have a lot of our carryover funds, uh particularly our one-time COVID funds that we received two years ago, and we had a two-to-three-year spending plan. So every time we spend those actual funds, it's gonna show that we have a deficit because we're we're spending funds that we received in a previous year. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Other questions by the board?
I have a question on the, I think you talked about in the previous slide on twenty-four. Talked about not being able to meet our statutory or something like that. Yeah, it is, as we progress right later in later years. Are they doing anything to address that or?
No, um, um, what they do is, um, what they tell us, you know, that's why we have a spending plan. Um, and we're supposed to always work to align our budget based on our actual enrollment in ADA. So that way, even though without a COLA or with the COLA, we can still meet our financial obligation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments by the board?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Jamal, uh for this detailed presentation. Now moving to item three point three, uh review of potential Azusa High School mascots and logos. Um, Mr. Ortega, I know we had, you and I had a preliminary conversation. Uh, if you could uh share out um the uh the mockups on on screen um so that we can have a a public look altogether. And I think for the benefit of those joining us, if you could give just a short recap about um the process by which um the new mascot uh was identified and how we got here where we have um three presentations.
Thank you, uh, yes. So uh, per the direction of the Board of Education, a committee was formed. We actually shout out to Ms. Class and Mr. Lemunyan, who were on the committee uh in the audience with us today. Uh, that committee uh had a bunch of stakeholders from staff, parents, uh members of the indigenous community, students, uh alumni. Um, and that was facilitated uh by Dr. Wong from APU. Um, and the board gave direction that that committee would make a decision on what the new mascot for Azusa High School would be. Uh, that committee uh decided that the new mascot would be a Jaguar. Uh, they also provided uh some guidelines on what the Jaguar should not represent or should not have. Um, and then we launched a thought exchange uh to staff, students, and the community to ask the opposite question, what should the new um mascot represent? All of that data was provided to NTS Communications, which which is the design company. Um, and they provided a draft, these are drafts only, uh three different drafts. Uh, we call them A, B, and C of what the logo, what the mascot and logos might look like. And uh tonight, we're looking for direction from the Board of Education uh in terms of uh where do we go from here to actually making a de- a decision uh on these uh mascots and logos.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Uh, you know, I'm looking at this on the shared screen, is there a way to um flip through um the three logo A, B, and C?
Uh, yes, uh, so what you're seeing on the screen right now is A. And A um has three different components, and that's true for B and C as well. So you'll have, the first thing you'll see is a school logo, followed by a spirit logo, and then followed by a spirit icon. And so every.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
A hundred percent.
Okay, so A is?
So A is comprised, and this is true for B and C as well, is comprised of three different um sets. The first one is called the school logo, so for example, this is something that would be on um maybe some um stationary, um maybe on folders, maybe on a wall, right? So that's a school logo. Each set also has a spirit logo, so a spirit logo maybe on a banner, maybe on a shirt. Um, so that's, that's the spirit banner, and then you have a spirit icon. The spirit icon, think about maybe a hat, um, you know, maybe a patch, uh those kinds of things. Uh, so each one has these three. So what we just saw is A, and then we're gonna show you B. So here's B, same thing, school logo, followed by spirit logo, followed by spirit icon. And then we have C, school logo, spirit logo, and spirit icon. Again, just want to reiterate that these are just drafts, uh first drafts of potentials.
And so, Mr. Taga, I will um, I'll just share with with my colleagues, my my thought process before, before we saw these presentations. Um, knowing that um the original mascot for Azusa High School was voted on by students. Um, and knowing that our uh school mascot committee was comprised of students, parents, staff members, and alumni, um kind of taking all that history and moving forward. Um, I I feel pretty strongly that um the next logo that we adopt as a, as a school district um should be um, you know, decided upon uh by students. And when I think of students, I think of our current high school students as well as our current eighth graders, um those that will be joining Azusa High School next year. Um, I like to remain um fairly agnostic um in in terms of um, you know, design. I I think that the um these first drafts um all, you know, they each have their different flavor and flair. Um, you know, something that jumps out to me is the incorporation of the blue and the red, uh which I'm sure is intentional um and part of this process. Um, and and I think in short, my 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 strongest opinion in in this process is for um our students, our current high school students and our our eighth grade students to um exercise their voice in selecting the final um mascot and logo set. And um with that, I'd love to open it up for discussion with uh my colleagues. Mr. Greer, would you like to go first?
Sure. So just a a question I have. So I'll say, um, I I I appreciate that, and and that that makes a lot of sense to me, uh Board, Board President, what you, what you shared there. Um, I I also noticed the um, the red here along with the 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 blue and 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 probably doesn't take too too much thinking to to imagine where some of the integration comes from. Can we speak to where in the process that came along and and what what some of the conversation was about including red with uh the the typical Aztec blue?
Yes, uh, in the thought exchange, uh, this was one of the uh more resounding uh feedbacks uh that came out of the exchange uh is that um there was a desire to pay some kind of homage, if you will, uh to Glasson High School. And mo- I would say the overwhelming majority of that came via adding some red uh to uh to the design.
Is there, go ahead, uh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, only difficult because I can't see you. Um, Mr. Ortega, uh, can you confirm that the blue and the red presented here are the current blue and red from the two high schools?
I can definitely confirm that the blue is, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the red, but I will double check. But I can definitely con- confirm that the blue is the correct blue.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Graham, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, so the the, the only thing I I think I I would want to communicate is that it does, it does seem um, the 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 way that the two contrast, um, I I understand the the intention behind it, but the way that the two contrast does seem to present somewhat of some clashing. Um, and so I'll just kind of, I I I wonder as as people, as that thought came out, was there an opportunity? Some sometimes their ideas or their thoughts, and then we kind of see it, and then after we see it, we may, we may think differently about it. So in the midst of a of a thought exchange, were there, were there any kind of uh mockups that were shared within the thought exchange um to see the two colors together so that uh folks could could speak into that?
Uh, there there were not. Um, but what I could tell you is that uh in our uh contract with NTS, um, it is very clear that this is draft one. And so I I couldn't imagine that if we wanted to, we could get further feedback on what we have right now in terms of feedback, likes, dislikes, you know, those kinds of things. Um, and then based on that, you know, there could be a second round of of drafts based on that feedback that we receive. Uh, and again, we would be looking for the direction from the board, is that feedback that the board is giving? And then we bring a second set, and then it goes out to students. Is that feedback that the students and community like, you you know, uh, either way, but a hundred percent we can get feedback on now that we actually have a product.
Yeah, and that and that's maybe the only, the only thing that I I I would would talk about it. Again, if if um I I so appreciate what Board President shared, and so if if we share this out and our and and our students in particular are are excited about this and have ownership, then then I want to get behind it. And I want to, you know, then then let's go. Um, I wanna, I guess, be able to call out um and and invite um students in particular to look at, are there ways where some things sound like a good idea in principle, but then when it's actually played out, um, is, should there be adjustments or tweaking of of certain colors so as to to allow for them to um, you know, work and and um coordinate with each other? Or do we want to take, or or is this a, you know, intentional thing that we are wanting to do? So again, want to be careful, I'm probably already saying more than I than I should here. Um, but but that that's the only thought that I have is um wanting to honor the thinking behind this, but leave room for some some back and forth and and exploration.
Board member Arianez? Is that, we'll come back to you. Board member Rodriguez Pena.
Yes, um, so you're saying that we should give the opportunity to the eighth graders? Is that the grade, are we gonna pick a specific grade or are we?
I I I was suggesting our current nine, ten, eleven, twelve graders and our current eighth graders because they will be the first new class coming in as ninth graders to have this new mascot and logo.
Yeah, I I I think that's a great idea, but I I also, I do like actually, um, my my opinion, how they have the red and the blue mixed together because I feel, I know we spoke a lot, a lot about fairness on 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 both schools, respecting both schools, and maybe that's the idea they had, they were trying to do just that other than when, what remember Grill mentioned, I mean, we did say we were gonna use Azusa's colors, we we did say that. Um, but if you mix the the red and the blue, then you get purple or something like that, I think it's called. Um, you know, then you you're you're mixing both colors. Um, but I I still, I do like the idea if that is not possible, because I know that we did mention we're gonna keep the the blue and the and the and the black. Um, and that we have the red, red behind it. Um, also, I I was wondering that when we voted, the Board of Education is what I mean, on November the first, and we we spoke about um what our vote was on the mascot. And I was just questioning where it says on the third one, um, home of the Aztecs, uh, when uh the teacher came and read to us what um it was gonna look like. And I thought I was voting for, she, you know, she mentioned Azusa High, well, the committee is proud to announce Azusa High School to be home of the Jaguars. So myself is voting, I I'm voting, ju- just saying, okay, yeah, well, I vote on that. You know, I I'm voting what she's reading, this is what she read to us. And then she read, you know, the 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 characteristics and the rationale. She did mention, you know, we we hope to bring the Jaguar, we'll bring unity and pride. Um, and I see unity and pride is looking at at the both colors together. But I go back to the same thing, when I voted, I'm assuming that, okay, yeah, the home of the, the home of the Jaguars, and then it's changed. So I I don't know, I don't know where that thinking was, or that's just a question I do have.
Board member Rodriguez, uh Vice President, uh Rodriguez Pena is absolutely correct. Uh, the board uh did vote um on four different distinct items for Azusa High School. And one of them was that they were gonna remain the Ice Aztecs. And one of them was that they were gonna change uh their logo uh and their mascot. Uh, this is something that came up uh during the committee work and something that came up when we were talking to the designers on how to square away the fact that we're the Aztecs. Um, but we have the Jaguar. And ultimately, if we were to say Azusa Jaguars or home of the Jaguars, then where does the Aztec fit in? Um, so then are we changing the name of the high school, like Azusa Aztec High School, home of the Jaguars? And so that that was a a piece of conversation. Um, and because the the board uh had decided that they would remain the Aztecs, uh, taking everything into consideration that the logo and the mascot was about um about being culturally appropriate and not not being offensive. Um, this seemed like we thought we were embodying what what the board was intending to do, but we could be wrong.
But but just also how it says uh Azus Aztecs, and then you have a Jaguar. I mean, is the Jaguar the animal of the Aztec? Do we, I mean, it's, you know, it it is? Okay, so maybe that's what was behind, I'm I'm just asking the question that.
Board member Benamitas?
I think I would appreciate, um, I I don't know, when you recommended the or suggest the idea of going to the students or showing the mockup to the committee, right? I'm thinking that, um, and then it kind of, you know, it kind of brought me back to the LCAP and where students are, you know, they're saying their voices aren't being heard. And I think that this, because it's so, you know, it it was such a, you know, I don't know when, I I wasn't here as a board member then, but I I I heard of it, and I had been watching the the committee. Um, you know, it's very, they're very passionate about um the logo. And so I think it would create an opportunity so that students could be heard and that their voice would be heard. And I think there's value in that. So I think that um that would be something we should look, really consider.
Board member Arianez? Are you ready for your comment?
I don't think.
Thank you.
Um, I, I actually really like the colors, the the red and and, you know, white, it it's red, white, and blue that come together, that that's what I see. I see unity. I see, like I said, red, white, and blue represents both schools. Um, I do see the the blue that we are showing our. that we're showing, um, on our screen is a little different than what we're seeing in our computers right now. So I would agree that checking back on the original of what, you know, what Azusa High has right now and the color that Gladstone High, that it matches, um, that as well. I, since we are not voting on it, I can't say which one I like, but I, I would agree, yes, that our students, I, I, eighth grade and, let's see here, what'd you say? Eighth grade and middle school, right? Middle school, eighth graders, you said, and the high schoolers. I, I think we should also include the seniors in it. You know, they were part of this transition as well. And leaving, uh, some type of legacy as well. So I, I would include this, you know, all of high school and, um, actually I would, I would include all middle schoolers. Because they're the ones that are going to graduate, they're the ones, right? Um, that have been with, on this journey with us, we're closing their schools, you know, the middle schools. We're, we're combining it to one school, one middle school, one high school. I, I would like to include all middle school, not just eighth grade. For them to have their voice. So when they do graduate from this new high school, that they have pride in being part of this new high school as well and, um, and have that, uh, connection. Other than that, um, I, again, I, I, I want to say which one I like, but I can't, but I, I, I would like to stick with the red and the blue and, uh, home of the Aztecs is, is fine. Um, the Jaguar look great. The one that I like. But no, yes. So, um, yeah, I would like to see the students, all high school, all middle schoolers. And how, what is it, what does the timeframe look like for, for this survey to, to go out and for us to be able to, um, get the results? Um, how are they going to, uh, you know, how are they going to, uh, vote? Thank you. Um, because I would not like, you know, if we're going to have students, let, let's record their student ID. They all have an ID number, right? I, I mean, let's record it with that so that we don't have parents or other community members or other people voting for this. It's truly coming from the students. If, if that's what the board is saying, right? And that's what I'm hearing what the board is saying tonight is that we want the students. Is that correct? So, so can we, can we have some tracking on each student? So that way only with the student ID, they're able to go ahead and vote one time.
So is that something we can accomplish using email through Google Forms, the student email addresses?
Yeah, I'm envisioning, I'm envisioning if I'm, if I am, uh, hearing the board correct, that phase one would be to actually elicit student voice for feedback on the current drafts. And that we would take that feedback from the students. And then we would, uh, provide that to the designer and say, okay, these were the first drafts. Here's some feedback on the drafts. They would work in that feedback, rework the, uh, the logo sets. And then they would vote on A, B, or C. But, uh, I, I believe that for the vote, uh, we can definitely, uh, probably use, uh, their email accounts because that is, that's another way to, to identify.
Can they use that, that youth true, true survey? Is that, is that possible?
Uh, not the youth true survey, but I am thinking for the feedback session, we would launch another thought exchange.
And then would they do that like in, in their classroom, like they do when, when they do the other surveys similar to that?
That's a potential, yes.
Okay.
And the only thing I had, so I, I, Board Member Arianez, I heard you share about expanding it out to, to junior high. I, I, I actually personally would be comfortable, um, keeping it at what was originally suggested, which is high school. And I think that extending it out to eighth grade, uh, in my opinion, uh, would be a sufficient expansion into middle school. And I, I personally wouldn't expand it all the way down, uh, to seventh and, and sixth grade.
But I want to share my, my, my thought on that. I have a, I, I have a almost middle schooler that would, and friends that are in middle school that have shared that they would like to be part of this. And this is why I'm putting it out on the table because they're feeling, they're also feeling, you know, a loss in, in, in their schools. Such as the middle schools, middle schools closing. The least that we could do is gift them this, you know, vote. So that is why I'm, I'm asking the board tonight to extend it to all middle schoolers.
Right. And, and I'm saying, I, I hear that. And I, I'm, I'm saying I would, I would be comfortable going down to eighth grade, but not down to, not down to sixth grade personally.
Can we have some further discussion? Uh, Board Member Rodriguez Pena, your thoughts on the, the grade span, uh, the student participants or voters?
I, I think like when we first started, when we mentioned the, um, the eighth graders, nine, 10, 11. Because those students, um, well, the 11th graders will be graduating next year from there. Correct. And then the, um, the eighth graders will be going into the high school. So, you know, I, I think they, they're the ones that should be able to, to decide.
Thank you. And to clarify, my, my, my proposal was grades eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
I'm sorry, we mentioned, you know, the timeline, you know, our timeline is, 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 you know, getting pretty tight, knowing when, when this change has to happen. And, and I know that, um, hoping they worked a little faster this time because I know they took a while. They took, seemed like an extra month. I, I may be wrong, but you know, I, I don't know what their job is and how hard it is for them to do all this. So we also take that into consideration on, on the timeline and when this is change needs to happen.
Yeah. If we get direction tonight from the board, um, I will definitely, um, move quickly on launching the exchange, getting that feedback in into the designer and then launching the vote.
And Board Member Benavides, your thoughts on, um, the grade level voters?
I'm comfortable with eight, nine, 10.
I'm sorry, did you say just eighth, ninth and 10?
No, eight, nine, 10, 11, great.
And 12 also?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm.
Can I, can I speak before? So just, just, and again, the majority, whatever they want, I, I'm going to support. But again, the students are watching and, and they're asking to have a vote on this. And I'm just clarifying. So we're, what we're saying is, I'm sorry, even though you're in middle school, you don't get the vote. I mean, just to clarify.
We're not saying that.
I, I, I mean, I, that's why I'm asking that they're watching because they know that we're talking about the logo. This is why I'm bringing it up and putting it out on the table. So we said students, we didn't, we didn't clarify before. So to their understanding, they thought they were going to have a vote in this. And like I said, for them is also very emotional to the fact that, you know, and their middle school is closing and so forth. So I just want to clarify as a board, I mean, I, I support the majority. I, I've said what I've said, but I just want to make sure that that's.
Yeah. So to reiterate, I, 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 my preference would be eighth through 12th grade. Right.
That was my question. Yeah.
So I think we've heard, uh, Mr. Greer, Board Member Rodriguez Pena and Board Member Benavides, and I, share our thoughts around eighth through 12th grade inclusive. Uh, and Board Member Arianez, um, you, you maintain your, um, opinion about including grades six through 12 or seven through 12?
Six through 12.
So we, we, we've shared out, um, you know, it seems like our, um, our stance on this has been stated. Um, so I'm, I'm not an expert in, in consensus, but it sounds like we have consensus um, among the majority of the board with that, with, we have consensus on that. Do we, do we have consensus around, student grade levels that will ultimately vote on the mascot and the, the presentations to be eighth through 12th grade inclusive?
Yes. Yes, Dr. Bo, it's the consensus. And that, that's why I just said, okay, just to be clear. And that's why Adrian said, yes, this is, I still stand on this. And so, yes, it is a eighth through 12.
Okay. So, Mr. Ortega, um, do you need any further direction on how to proceed with, uh, the mascot review and design process?
No, I just want to just summarize it really quick.
Before you summarize it, timeframe, you're, you're going to get back to us on the timeframe, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, just to summarize real quick, uh, we will reach out to, uh, eight current eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade students to provide feedback on the current logo sets, uh, first drafts. We will take that information, uh, analyze it and, uh, provide that to the, uh, designers. They will implement that feedback and, uh, bring back, uh, three new logo sets or tweaked or edited logo sets. And then, uh, those three will be the ones that then go out to vote for eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade students.
Thank you very much. And I heard you say, Mr. Taga, that, um, you're planning to use the thought exchange platform for the feedback?
Correct. For round one feedback, thought exchange. And then for round two, um, we'll get together, but, uh, probably email with the vote right in the email body probably makes the most sense. But we'll figure out the, the best way to ensure that it's one vote, one student.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for your thoughtful, um, discussion and feedback on this important issue. Um, I'm excited to move forward with, uh, a fresh look for Azusa High School. The time is now 7:31. Um, and it brings us to item 4.1, adjournment. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Can we hand vote, please? I, I logged out.
Absolutely. Board Member Greer?
Yes.
Board Member Arianez?
Yes.
Board Member Rodriguez Pena?
Yes.
Board Member Benavides?
Yes.
The board member vote is a yes. We are adjourned at 7:32 PM.